Good evening. I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Willmet Public School, District 39, for Monday, September 26, 2016. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alice Shaq?
Here.
Cindy LaCantara?
Here.
John Flanagan?
Here.
Please carry on.
Here.
Cindy Levine?
Here.
Mark Stee?
Here.
Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Principal Sue Kick will introduce some new Harper students to lead us in the pledge tonight.
These are a few of our new students at Harper Elementary, and I hadn't had this idea before, but I thought it would be fun to see some of our new friendly faces at Harper in District 39. And these kids have all come out tonight. They're going to introduce themselves, and some might share a little something that's been really inviting and happy about being at Harper in District 39.
My name is Ella.
My name is Claire Smith.
My name is Rachel Slavin.
My name is Eva Polifka, and I've had fun making new friends.
My name is Colin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for being here, and welcome to District 39. Now may I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the June 27, 2016 -- that's not right -- of the August.
The August, yes.
August 29, 2016, regular and executive session meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the August 29, 2016, regular and executive session meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion having been made and seconded, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Yes, sir?
On the regular minutes, page three, under numeral two, second paragraph, beginning board questions, that there are a couple sentences that appear to be repeated in my copy, so let's just delete that.
Yep, thank you, I saw that, too. Any other comments? Okay, great. So if everyone is in favor of approving the minutes as amended, could you please indicate by saying yea?
Yea.
Okay, so the motion carries by general consent. Thank you. So this brings us to the first opportunity for audience members to address the board. Would anybody like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, no one, let's move on to our board committee reports. The first is the Strategy Committee. Mr. Steen.
Yes, the Strategy Committee met, and we will actually be discussing some of these strategy items later this evening, so I won't overdo it, but I think the major step forward was that we were able to identify three different groups of strategy initiatives that we have, and we found that we are in the early phases of developing some of them. We are well into development of some of them, and we are implementing some of them. So we've concentrated on the early-stage development of our strategy initiatives, and as I said, we'll have a report about this a little later.
Great, thank you very much. Facility Development, Ms. LaCantara.
Yes, the last facilities meeting took place just prior to our last regular meeting on August 29, so there is no additional report. Our next meeting will be in the morning on October 17, here at the MEC.
Great, thank you very much. Insurance Advisory, Ms. Kearney.
Insurance Advisory also has not met since our last meeting. The next meeting's going to be October 17, at 4:00 at the MEC.
Perfect, thank you. Community Review Committee, Mr. Steen.
So the CRC met on September 12, here in the MEC. The work of the CRC is going forward nicely. We have our topic for this year, and this meeting we spent dividing up into groups, assigning people to the topics that they will address, and finding the leaders and beginning to define the work streams for each of those communities. The next meeting was meant to be in October, but it will no longer be so because of a certain local baseball team that has done extremely well.
So I think they're meeting in November, right?
That's correct, that's correct.
Perfect. Okay, Educational Foundation, Ms. LaCantara.
Yes, I attended the District 39 Educational Foundations Meeting on September 14. At the meeting, final details were being ironed out for the Foundation's now annual Attire to Inspire Fashion Show fundraiser, which was scheduled for September 22. I was at the fashion show, and I'm glad to report that it was a rousing success, with many shops in our community on site as sponsors. And of course, it's always a delight to have our superintendent on the catwalk. The Foundation also discussed ongoing plans for science Olympiad classes at High Crest and Willmet Junior High, the GRIP grant program, the Foundation's Bingo, and ever-popular Trivia Night fundraisers, as well as communications efforts to ensure our community is aware of all the Foundation's good works.
Great, thank you. The WCSCA, Ms. Kearney.
WCSCA has also not met since our last meeting. Next meeting's going to be November 14, also at the MECC, at 4:00.
Okay, great, thank you. School Finance, Mr. Flanagan.
Like the Facility Development Committee, we met on August 29, have not met since then, our next meeting is on October 17, 8:00 AM, here at the McCallion Center.
Thank you very much. The Legislative Update, Ms. LaCantara.
In Springfield, an evidence-based school funding model appears to be taking hold with a bipartisan funding commission, which is meeting every two weeks. The goal appears to be for funding to follow students, with low-income students first, and with lost revenue to a school system occurring only if and when enrollment drops. Originally, with Senate Bill 1, the proposal was to redistribute funding from wealthier districts. It appears that this approach, at least for now, appears to be off the table in funding commission deliberations. There are rumblings that the commission may instead consider increasing income tax and freezing property taxes simultaneously, but that's all not at all clear. As far as pension reform, constitutional changes are under discussion, with some form of a cost shift to local districts being a likely outcome after a new school funding formula is organized. The Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, is the new federal law replacing No Child Left Behind. A new federal accountability model considers four factors, which will generate then a school accountability score. Those factors are proficiency, currently based on Park scores, student growth, with the model not yet determined, ELL growth, and another factor which is supposed to be flexibly determined by the state, with Illinois looking at student attendance and a single eighth-grade-on-track measure. With regard to the proficiency factor, as we know, Illinois now uses the Park test for assessments, and as we recall, the Illinois State Board of Education announced last year that the SAT would be used in high schools, grades nine through 12 in lieu of Park. Dr. Lechner and other area superintendents continue to advocate for the adoption of and/or flexibility for K through eight districts to use an alternative to Park, namely, an assessment tool that offers a full scope of instructional toolkits with rigorous standards-based assessment, coupled with benchmarking and immediate data to support instruction. Although there certainly is a clear value in upholding Illinois learning standards and an assessment tool that can measure those standards across the state, and although Park may be improved over time, in its current form, Park can be redundant, time-consuming, and untimely in reporting outcomes, without all the benefits that we do see from some other assessment tools. So our administration is engaged in ongoing advocacy with the Illinois State Board of Education in this regard, and we will continue our updates and discussions on this subject.
Thank you very much.
Alice, I have a couple questions. Is that okay?
Sure.
Probably, Dr. Lechner, you might be able to answer some of them. Thank you for sending the report from the superintendent's meeting.
Great.
How do you -- what do you define evidence-based as? What are you reading that? What evidence are they looking for?
Those would be the four factors, those are the evidences.
The reason I ask, I was at a forum this Sunday, and I think it was Representative Sen or Senni, I'm not sure exactly. Not sure what her district is either, but she was referring to the evidence-based model. She was using an example of how the state of Illinois or in this funding, you know, the collaborative funding committee was going to be talking about limiting or deciding what teachers get paid. Do you -- did you hear any of that?
No.
Okay, so going forward, so that takes me to where it says the second mechanism to fund, and currently a more popular option. I have a couple questions about this. Did you understand, so they said to increase income tax and freeze property taxes at the same time?
Yeah, that's not officially being discussed. It was an idea that's been floating around, but yes, that would be correct.
But they didn't talk about, so when they were talking about freezing property taxes previously, they were also talking about taking, looking at prevailing wage and collective bargaining practices? You didn't hear any of that discussion?
I didn't hear anything about that, no.
Okay, so that's...
I mean, it doesn't mean that it's not on the table. I only got a report from somebody who was there, so I don't...
But they didn't refer to it?
They did not.
Okay, and then, secondly, where it talks, so you went on to the low inflation thing, but where it talks about the pension reform and the reverse cost shift, I don't understand this. So when it's saying the cost shift is very likely, that would be the pension cost shift, the state that takes care of coming down to the districts locally, correct?
Right.
But then it talks about it would, we would have to pay all TRS for employees over $180,000.
Yeah, that number was tossed out there, but it could change every second.
But aren't we already then paying all TRS if the pension shift cost came to the local?
No, those are two different things. One is the pension cost shift, which means that we're shifting the state's obligation or the employer's obligation back to the districts.
Correct.
So there, so let's think of it like Social Security. So 9% of a teacher's salary goes into their pension, that they pay themselves, and then there's a whole 'nother 9% or 10% that the employer is supposed to match.
Okay.
And that's the part that would be shifting back from the state to the local districts. That's separate from this other thing.
The rest of the pension.
Because we have school districts right now. This is not District 39, I'm going to be very clear.
Right.
But there are other school districts where the boards pay for the employees' portion, that 9% they're paying for, like the city of Chicago. This thing would undo that.
Okay, I follow that. But, so then it said, we're fine with that unless they raised, lowered it down to $100,000 or something. You're making up a number.
Yeah, I made up that number because what, there's something else that they're talking about. Again, this, none of this is in writing, or it's...
But it's good to know.
But it's good to know. So at some point, they're saying, but if districts choose to pay their teachers really high salaries, then at the same time, we may require them to pay that 9%. So that would be disincentivizing districts from giving really, really, really high salaries.
Which would essentially be a state law disincentivizing...
Correct.
Kind of taking away local control over...
Possibly, but it's not a law, it's not even on writing.
Right, but it's being discussed.
All right.
But then, one more question. I know we referred to, this doesn't apply to administrator salaries.
It would apply to administrator salaries. My comment was that in District 39, you're already doing that, so it wouldn't affect our budgets.
Okay, so administrators fall into the same basket as teachers.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. I think that's...
So my point was that that whole reverse cost shift would not impact District 39 unless they had some low number for the salary.
I'm glad you said that, because I was thinking it was just applying to teachers versus administrators. And then, final question on that, or on the Every Student Succeeds Act, what is it that will, what like proficiency scores do we need to achieve?
They haven't been determined. What they have looked at are those four factors.
Mm-hmm.
The first three are clearly spelled out, the one that's other is not. So it's a growth model, it is a proficiency, which is like some, the proficiency part is just like the old I sat in the park right now.
Right.
It's just some standard level.
But before, we had to meet certain standards in extended year, and I know that went away, which were kind of impossible.
Yeah, under No Child Left Behind, the required proficiency went up each year until it got to 100%. But 100% is not realistic, 100% of the students...
Exactly.
Right.
But there's no proficiency number attached to these factors yet?
No, no, yeah, it's all under review and discussion.
And then, just one more question. Remind me, what percent of federal funding do we get per...
Now, federal and state are two different...
That's why I'm saying federal.
That's a good question. Is it 3% or 4% do we get of federal, of our budget? Two, less than, around 1% is federal.
So in other words, we have to meet all these things that they say for 1% of our budget?
Right, but the state has given the flexibility to do that, and it wouldn't come to us directly. It's the state of Illinois that gets the federal money most of it, so there...
So it passes through the state?
Right.
But as a result, if, but even so, we still have to meet this criteria for that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Wait, one more thing, I just wanted to say something good. I happened to go to an environmental awareness thing hosted by Senator Bess, Laura Fine, and Robin Gable on the 12th, and just so you know, Senate Bill 550 has been introduced, and that's about lead-based testing in water that's, it hasn't, I don't know if there's any meat in it yet, or made it to committee, but it will be requiring schools to do all that, and as you know, you've already done that.
We've done it.
We've already done, yep.
So again, an example of exceeding the law and doing the right thing.
We're always ahead of the stage.
Exactly.
Thank you. Before moving on to informational items, I need to take a step back and approve the August 29 budget hearing minutes. May I have a second, please?
Do you need a...
I mean, a motion, sorry. I need a motion first, and then a second.
Okay, I will move to approve the minutes of the August 29, 2016 budget hearing meeting.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion having been made and seconded, are there any comments, errors, or omissions from the board? Okay, seeing none. All of those in favor of approving the minutes is submitted. Would you please say yea?
Yea.
Thank you. The motion carries by general consent. Okay, let's move on to our first information item, which is written communication. The board received written communication from Keith Dronin of Willmet regarding District 39 alumni David Fonbula, who came from a Liberian refugee camp. David received the Evan Scholarship and is now an Evan Scholar Chapter House President at Purdue University. It was quite a heartwarming story. Anyway, Dr. Lechner, administrative announcements.
Yes, we'll start with summer writing. Each summer, teachers collaborate to improve and revise and update our curricula. This year, science and writing were a focus. Regarding science, High Crest teachers aligned curriculum maps to the next-generation science standards. Their 5th grade class of teachers developed common science assessments across the board, and their 6th grade teachers reviewed the application of engineering practices in their maps. In writing, from every grade level, we're now aligned new materials to the, we now have new materials aligned to the new ELA curriculum, English Language Arts. Learning targets for each unit of study were identified. Teaching and online resources were added to the curriculum maps, and everything is all now linked. The same exact process is going to apply for reading, and they're going to do that during the school year for next, for implementation next school year for reading. Five Essentials. The State Board of Education requires that we administer the Illinois Five Essentials survey this year. Teachers, students, and parents will be able to complete the survey from November 16 through January 16, 2017. As a minimum, the state requires districts to participate every other year, and this is our every other year. The Five Essential provides school districts with information on school culture and climate. The data from the survey is published in the school report card in the following year. Students and teachers will have time allocated from their day to do this assessment. Parents will be informed about their option to complete the survey if they choose, and the results will be shared with the board in the spring. Mindset Revolution Parent Night. This Thursday evening, we're pleased to welcome Stanford University's Dr. Joe Bowler and Kathy Williams to speak to parents about what it means to teach math for a growth mindset. Parents will learn how math can be reinforced so children can grow confidentially as mathematical thinkers. The event is taking place at the junior high in the auditorium. We have 585 registered guests, and registration is now closed. Finally, we received two FOIA requests this month. First was from Jarrett Rutecki of Betterment Government Association requesting collective bargaining agreements, administrator contracts, 2617 budgets, payroll, and legal settlements from August 1, 2015 to present. The second FOIA was from Gabrielle Loricella of Smart Procedure, and as you know, every quarter, they are spoiling all of our purchasing records from June 26 to the 16 for their own business purposes. And that's it.
Thank you. Our next strategic plan update is the 2016-2017 District 39 Strategic Plan. Dr. Lechner?
Here it is. This is one that Mr. Steen was referencing earlier. This report provides our strategic plan for the next school year. It's been revised to make it easier for readers to understand. It's divided into three types of strategic categories. The first includes initiatives that are brand-new. The second involves ongoing initiatives. And the last group is annual business, like our curriculum review. I'd like to thank the Board Strategy Committee for its input and guidance in the development of this new plan, and we have Katie Lean, a team of administrators, here to share the report.
Good evening. On behalf of all the District 39 administrators, I will present District 39's strategic plan. District 39 follows a yearly sequence of purposeful planning. In May, the Community Review Committee presents a report in which recommendations are made regarding a topic of study. In June, the administrative team provides an update on the progress of the year's strategic plan. In addition, analysis of next-year strategic priorities commences with attention given to the recommendations from the CRC report. In August, the superintendent responds formally to the Community Review Committee's report and recommendations. For this year, we would like to note that the 2015-16 CRC report was an audit of its own form and function, so although the superintendent supported all recommendations proposed, the recommendations presented apply directly to the committee and are not included in the strategic plan. In September, administration presents the strategic plan for approval by the Board of Education, and in October, the superintendent submits district superintendent's goals to the board based on the strategic plan. The administrative team will provide implementation updates on the goals and outcomes in January and/or February. In this year's strategic plan, the board will notice formatting changes that were already described by Dr. Lechner, so I'm going to just continue on to the next slide for that. The first section is the new strategic initiatives. The administration identified four new focus areas: school climate, student school day, school attendance, and student growth. The first is school climate. Social conflicts and bullying are occurring in and out of our educational setting. When a case of bullying arises, District 39 takes it seriously and conducts investigations of all reports. In particular, there have been increased reports of before-and-after-school incidences that involve racial and/or religious tension, as well as social conflicts and bullying within social media settings. However, distinguishing between social conflicts or bullying is challenging. Potentially, what one may define as an instance of bullying could actually be an instance of typical, age-appropriate social conflict. Therefore, there is a need to develop a common understanding among all stakeholders. District 39 must continue efforts in developing this common understanding and take proactive measures in the areas of diversity, equity, and inclusiveness. Therefore, District 39 is committed to developing empathy, instilling respect, and promoting acceptance of responsibility in our school communities by conducting a review of our current practices, study best practices, and develop short- and long-term plans to improve school climate. The second is student school day. Our school starts and end times vary, as well as time allocated for contentary instruction. Although instructional practices work with our current scheduling structure, District 39 acknowledges that, if adjusted, school schedules can maximize instructional best practices for student learning. In addition to start and end times, transportation schedules, and shared staff members are factors that impact our current school day schedules. Another component to student success is time for educators to engage and sustain collaboration. By increasing teacher collaboration, teachers could better coordinate contentary instructions so students have similar experiences across the grade level. It would also provide time needed to analyze student data, plan for interventions, and improve transitions from one grade level to another for students academically, socially, and emotionally. District 39 believes that restructuring the K4 school day will provide the time for students and teachers. Therefore, efforts will focus on reviewing the District 39's early childhood through grade 8 school day schedules and prepare to make recommendations by the spring of 2017. The third is school attendance. Following an analysis of the last five years of attendance data, positive school attendance held at a consistent rate of 70% to 73%, with the 2015-2016 year being 71%. In other words, 71% of students district-wide miss nine or less days of school. Although attendance rates have not significantly fluctuated, the 2015-16 data shows that approximately 6% of the remaining 29% of students not showing positive attendance patterns were considered chronically absent, which is defined as missing 18 or more school days. In early grades, attendance habits are formed. These habits contribute to compounding episodes in later grades that could lead to school refusal. Illness is a justifiable reason for missing school, and at times, students may have medical situations that result in absences. Unfortunately, absences not related to illness accumulate to the total days missed, and these sporadic absences build up to a point where students can miss more than nine days of Attendance impacts students at all levels of performance: poor, average, and high-performing. Therefore, District 39 needs to investigate the reasons for absences and identify any patterns or trends as it relates to cohorts of students. This investigation will better inform us of the factors and triggers that influence student attendance, and we are committed to improving student attendance by setting a goal of increasing average positive attendance from 71% to 80% by June of 2018. The fourth is student growth. In the spring of 2016, an investigative process for developing a student growth model began. The first step focused on the development of growth target ranges for District 39. The district began by establishing growth target ranges using local performance series data only. This data and growth target ranges serves as an entry point for understanding students' needs and adds to another student data, other student data such as curriculum-based assessments, noncognitive factors, and classroom performance. These multiple data points are necessary to provide a more complete assessment of student District 39 will continue this investigative and reflective process to develop a student growth model, response to growth intervention, focusing on these outcomes. We'd like to develop a protocol for addressing the needs of students who do not meet expected growth, establishing specific criteria for measuring and monitoring students identified with a need for a growth plan, and building teacher and parent capacity to encourage student growth mindsets. The next section is continuing strategic initiatives. In the next section of the strategic plan, the administration identified two ongoing focus areas: sustainability, planning and practices, and learning commons. Sustainability, planning, and practices. District 39 continues to seek cost-effective and environmentally conscientious ways to operate. The plan will quantify fiscal and energy savings. Therefore, District 39 will develop five-year and 10-year facility plans to include cost-effective sustainable projects identifying financial and energy savings. In addition, environmental literacy is a priority, and a rubric will be developed so that a baseline can be established by spring of 2017. Learning Commons Space has been completed in three schools: Central, Willmet Junior High, and Harper as of August 2016. Ramona and McKenzie Schools will be complete in 2017, and High Crest Middle School is slated for completion in 2018. Learning Commons Spaces are structured to foster an environment that promotes communication, creativity, critical thinking, and collaboration, also referred to as the 4Cs. This year, the goals have been differentiated by school to reflect... have been differentiated by school to reflect the stage of development of the Learning Commons space. The final section is the annual business. The Departments of Curriculum and Instruction, Technology and Human Resources are committed to the work of the respective departments with the following outcomes and goals. Curriculum review work will include English Language Arts, the reading component, and world languages. A review of the district's tool for communicating student progress and achievement will be conducted this year through a progress reporting report card committee. Library and Media Technology curriculum will be completed January 2017 for implementation beginning fall of 2017, finalizing the one-to-one learning program, professional development plan for staff. And in addition, we will conduct a security audit this year. For Human Resources, the Performance Evaluation Reform Act, PARA, Joint Committee, will continue its work to make decisions regarding Domain Five of Teacher Evaluation, which addresses student growth. We are also continuing our progress toward all fifth-grade teachers obtaining a middle school endorsement and half of the teachers having math endorsements by the spring of 2018. The administrative team will now join me in answering any questions that you may have.
Board members, do we have any questions?
I do.
Okay, Tracy, would you like to go first?
That'd be great. Thank you. For number, or A, school climate, where you say that there's been reports of increased, I'm sorry, there've been increased reports before and after-school incidences, increased since when?
I would say within the last few years. Each year especially, as we came back to school this fall, there was a lot of parents meeting with administrators, talking about things that happened in the community. We can, the administration continues to get reports through the weekends or even after school. We don't have an exact number on that. We just anecdotally know that it seems like more and more parents are talking to us about things that are helping outside of the school day and asking for support with that.
But you think it's been over the last few years?
Yes, I do.
Like three or four?
Mm-hmm.
On that note, that's where I'm looking at, kind of tied to technology possibly could be a reason. I don't see it listed as a school attendance, academic, or specific program avoidance. I kind of think these two are tied together. The reason I'm saying that is if and over the last three or four years, I think we've pushed technology in, in the last three or four years in our middle school and junior high levels. Not saying that is the issue, but it might be something to look at. And I was thinking about how, when we did put iPads in, we recognized that we didn't have the technology infrastructure here to support the iPads. It needed to make an investment to do so. And it might be time to look at some supports for the kids. We've put, we've put a lot more expectations on the kids and teachers through technology, different assessments, curriculum review, teachers, et cetera. And when we're talking about how we can help teachers to better respond, I was thinking either possibly class, smaller class sizes, or it might be an idea to look at how Nutria does an advisory. Through the four years, they have like one adult that, you know, when they started, I mean, I haven't gone to Nutria yet, but I've heard that it's phenomenal. When they start, you know, they have that advisory team for their entire career through Nutria. Maybe that's something to look at at the Highcrest and Junior High level. Don't know if that's, that was just a little pop-in-the-head type suggestion as far as kids to reach out to.
And just to clarify, so that I write it in this section as far as my notes, you are referring to school attendance when you speak to advisory or the tech-
Correct.
The impact of technology.
But I think that ties to maybe why there might be more incidences of bullying, et cetera, because kids are more stressed out these days or have access to things they didn't have access to before.
I understand.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
No, not on that.
Okay, great. John?
I understand you don't have exact numbers for the incidences involving racial and/or religious tensions, as it's written here in the report. Kind of a ballpark. Any notion of what we've had maybe in the last 12 months?
I would say less than five that I'm aware of, but even one is too many in our opinion.
Agreed. Completely, yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else? Cindy?
On the school attendance, I think my question is more about the way you've articulated the issue and/or what your goal is. It still strikes me that if we've had a trend line for five years at 70-ish percent to improve from 71 to 80% is a pretty dramatic change. Then when you're describing the situation, I think you get down to, if I did the math right, that there's about 50 kids, you know, who are not positive attendance for reasons that we're trying to address, right? So I feel like you may be better off, I guess, coalescing this down to the real issue that you're trying to address, which is the children who are missing school for reasons of social anxiety, wanting to miss school, et cetera. It's not just attendance broadly, if I understand how you've described what you're really trying to address.
That is true, but also the research shows us that it's a very slippery slope. And if you, to move from that lesson positive into chronic, as students get older, we see that happening more and more. So we would like to address all attendants, so to help prevent that slippery slope and absolutely focus on those students with chronic attendance. We don't even want anyone to step over that line. So this goal is more encompassing to make sure that we're addressing all children.
I think you've said a high bar, a steep goal. More power to you. But I guess ultimately, as you move through this process and into next year, the activation of it, you know, obviously really assessing and tracking the real, the real crux of the problem, I guess, I'd want to be sure that that's what's getting addressed, not, not just that there's fewer kids who got the flu and they're, were out for-
Absolutely. We do look at the reasons behind the absences that be, well, as we're determining if we're going to intervene or not. And children do get sick, and they should be staying home.
I think the other part was at the elementary level. We decided as a whole that it would be good for us to do more parent education, because if we're doing a better job of that at the elementary level, then by the time the kids are getting to middle school and junior high, our hope would then, our work was well-received, and we're having less of those attendance issues.
So it may help when, ultimately, when you're reporting out on this, to look at it at cohort levels to understand kind of what's driving a different-
That's a great idea. The cohort, let me make a note of that. That's great.
And then, sorry, did you?
No, go ahead.
And then on the student growth, if I'm understanding this, and I think it's in here, but the point of this is this is about demonstrating growth across all cohorts. I know a lot of the work over historical times has been helping, you know, the people who are not achieving at a certain level. And this is about even high achievers. And it's in here. It just feels a little buried, so I'd want to make sure that, you know, that we call that out. This is addressing growth for all students, which is a new, a new thing, if you will. And I, and I know we don't want to get into too many of the action steps, but I will say that a lot of the action steps feel like it's about reflection and assessment. And if we're really trying to drive growth among a cohort that we haven't been actively looking at over time, I think there probably needs to be more kind of recommendations on what we're going to do, more action-oriented actions versus, there's a lot of reflection and data gathering, but what are we gonna do?
Absolutely. So first, yes, all of the students will be looked at. Because former reports have been presented on this, I didn't know to what level you would like, but most definitely, all levels will be looked at. And this year, because we are starting to try a lot of what we want to do, I believe that those action steps that you're referring to will come out of our efforts this year. But we wanted to proceed in a kind of slow implementation, really reflective way before defining anything in particular at this point.
Yeah, I want to add that we're developing a response to growth intervention model. It hasn't been developed yet, so that's the number-one action step. And then within that, then you're gonna see a whole bunch of stuff.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just have three more questions. Sorry. Back to the school attendance, and Cindy was talking about that. Looking at the action step, I think it would be, as far as the demographic of kids who aren't showing up due to anxiety or that's been determined, have, have we invited parents to give us feedback on what they think is creating the anxiety in their children to come to scho, I mean, have we asked those questions specifically?
When we have the individual meetings with parents to talk about our concerns, their input is absolutely sought after, and we listen to what they have to say. And oftentimes, they're asking for our support and help, and we're there to give that.
And when we talk about parent education, what do we mean? Like, what, an example of, do you have any idea of what you talk about to educate parents on attending school?
Just sometimes parents don't, don't, maybe don't understand how cumulative absences can get and how, how they can add up. And it might sound like, okay, they're only in kindergarten, they're only in first grade, but it, it starts those patterns and the impact that those patterns can have as they go through the grades and the research that's out there about that. Just an awareness.
And then just to add, from the elementary level, again, we sometimes will start observing some of this occurring as early as kindergarten and then into first grade. And so we're being much more proactive in those conversations with parents. If there are specific situations that are occurring that we can intervene, help with outside resources if needed, and really looking at this before it becomes that huge snowball in junior high school.
I also believe that there's a feature of the expectations and the district's desire to do a better job of communicating what homework practices are established and communicating that better and just really being a little bit more in, in our partnership with the home and school. So I feel that the education part, it's really loosely more working together as a school, district, and at home to make those topics of homework and expectations a little bit more realistic on both ends.
But that group is different than the anxiety and school refusal group.
That's exactly right. And we have a lot of experience with the school refusal anxiety students, which will keep redoubling our efforts. But it's this other group that, that we have never addressed. We have parents that call in and say, oh, my child is sick, so I'm gonna keep my sibling, the sibling home too today.
Sometimes they have-
Yeah, yeah.
Hockey or baseball tournaments.
Right, right. So for the first time, we're gonna be just saying, by the way, do you realize that 30% of our students, you know, are missing more than nine days of school? So just, I think just awareness alone is gonna be a huge thing.
And then just a comment on the Learning Commons. I would really love to see somewhere in there a goal of an opportunity for the public to be able to access the Learning Commons after-school hours. It's been quite an investment. And I think seventh and eighth grade would be really appropriate for kids just to be able to study there, meet there, et cetera, ahead of Nutria.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments?
Yep. I, I had just two, and actually echoing Ms. Levine's excellent comments. I do think that the, I sort of was doing back-of-the-envelope math, and I think your goal for school attendance is you're setting a very high bar for yourselves. And so, as she said, more power to you. Should we get to a situation where we are not gonna get to 80%, I can imagine a lot of really terrific outcomes despite not hitting 80%. So as you're thinking about the report out, I know you're being very thoughtful about where these absences are coming from, but as an example, as Ms. Kig outlined, you know, if we got to a situation where we dramatically reduced elementary school absences, you know, that bodes well for us for many years to come, right? So even if it doesn't impact the overall number, you know, as much as we hope. On the growth initiatives, I just wanted to call out the, one complicating factor, I think, in growth, and I'm sure you've appreciated it already, but when you're doing growth and you have to have two data points before you know what your growth number is, then the speed of reaction to the input has to be that much faster. And so I know we've talked about, for instance, year-over-year growth or measuring fall-to-fall and those kinds of things. So as we're going through, and I know it's all, we're developing it, so as we're going through, I hope we'll think very carefully about how we can ensure that, you know, we're not reacting to something that happened six months ago, which can be hard if you're doing a year-to-year growth. So that's, those are my only two comments. I think it's excellent work, and thank you very much for doing it.
I just want to add that the response to growth intervention model is gonna mirror our response to intervention model, which means it'll be a very immediate review of results, and then there'll be a process in place to follow up.
Great. Any other comments?
I have just one question about the school day. I don't see it mentioned here, but is, are, we gonna be looking at band and orchestra schedules and things like that as a part of looking at our school day?
Yes, I believe, if I go straight to it, we, we worded it so that it was encompassing a lot of before and after-school, so-
Oh, okay.
So the band and orchestra schedule would definitely be a part of that.
Oh, explore before.
So we have, yes, we have the programming schedules. We, we wanted to kind of encompass anything that would have an impact, so that would definitely be right there.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. If there are, I don't think any other questions. Thank you very much. This is really excellent. Great improvement over past years.
Okay, so we have three annual business items to discuss tonight. The first is the Nutria High School freshman survey.
Yes, the Nutria High School freshman survey is an annual report now in its seventh year. I can't believe that. It's wild. The results are a validation of the supportive work that's going on throughout District 39. This report gives us direct feedback from our 2015 graduates as we continue to prepare our students for the rigors of Nutria High School. Kelly Jackson has this report.
Good evening. Once again, this year, I will be presenting the results from the Nutria freshman survey. As Ray mentioned, it's in the seventh year of the survey, and the survey is given each spring to the freshman class in order to gauge their perceptions of preparedness for high school, both academically and in extracurricular areas. I receive the results from students who were the graduates of District 39, and I'm also able to look at the results in relation to the township as a whole. I do not receive the results from each township, district, as an individual, just for District 39. This year, numbers indicated that about 200 less took the survey than the previous year. So I think last year was like 11, oh, something four. And about 75 less than the prior year for Willmet Junior High. So you'll see the numbers of students that took the survey in both areas. The survey itself is split into three parts: academic, extracurricular, so clubs and athletics, and study skills or learner qualities. For the purposes of this report, we will be discussing student perceptions of preparedness in core academic areas, as well as their feelings of preparedness in some of the more intangible areas such as study skills and homework. The core academic areas focused on for this survey are English, both literature and writing, math, science, social studies, and foreign language. The study skills that are focused on include preparedness for the homework load and connections made with adults. When reporting on their perceptions of academic preparedness, students rate their preparedness on a four-point scale, noting whether they feel, felt very prepared, adequately prepared, somewhat prepared, or not prepared. For the purposes of this report, we will combine very and adequately prepared into one positive category, and the two lower categories of somewhat and not prepared into a category that denotes more negative perceptions of preparedness. So if you look on the screen, the graph that's shown illustrates how Willmet Junior High compares to the township in each of the core academic areas measured on the survey. Willmet Junior High is in the light green color, and the township is noted in the darker green color. You will see that in the areas of English, writing, math, and foreign language, Willmet Junior High students report feeling more prepared than the township overall. Additionally, in English literat- Additionally, in English, literature, and social studies, Willmet Junior High and the township are only slightly off. Let me take a minute to note the drop in science. It's important to see that last year, the township preparedness also dipped. Last year, the township reported 74% feeling prepared for science. And this year, it dipped by 8% to 66% feeling prepared. That's overall in the township. Willmet Junior High similarly dipped this year from last year's from 73% to 57% this year. We will talk about this dip a little bit later in the report, as well as action plans to address it. Please also keep in mind that because the junior high makes up about 40% of Nutria High School freshmen reporting on this survey, in some aspects, the district data is mirrored in the township data. The next graph on the screen illustrates a year-by-year comparison for the WJHS only result with the dark green color to the right being this year's data. Most of the content areas are relatively consistent in the students' reporting of preparedness across the years. English classes continue to report that they are up over a few years ago when there was a significant dip due to many of the plans that we have put in place over the last few years. Social studies is also up from last year, and foreign language stayed roughly the same, or did stay the same at 71%. Here I will offer a bit more explanation into the numbers reported for science preparedness. There are several factors as to why we may be seeing this happen. And we drilled a little bit deeper into the data and also looked at the comments that students indicated in their anecdotal information. First, there were a large percentage of science students completing the report who took a class other than the recommended class at about 10%. Of those students taking another level recommended, 64% took a higher-level class than was recommended. So when you're taking a higher-level class than what's recommended, you probably could feel unprepared for that class. Additionally, close to 32% of the students completing the survey, as opposed to 24% last year, from Willmet Junior High chose to take physics or the Physics PCB series for their class freshman year. In the comments area, several students cited their feelings of being unprepared for physics due to the difference between their middle school, junior high experience in science and the high school physics class. While students at Willmet Junior High and throughout their K-8 experience studied general physics concepts such as force and motion, energy transfer, and waves, the high school class includes a much higher level of math that's not typically present at the middle school, junior high level. It's also important to keep in mind that when the science curriculum was rewritten a few years ago, it was written to take an inquiry-based approach to learning, as is promoted by the next-generation science standards. This approach allows students to explore and dig deeply into content as they come up with questions to study further. Nutria science classes follow a much more traditional approach to instruction, including lectures and textbook-driven assessments. These are different than the student-driven inquiries and assessments, in common assessments, that are found at Willmet Junior High. In a few minutes, I'll discuss also action steps planned by the science department to address this preparedness feeling change. Right now, I'd like to focus your attention on the portion of the survey that reviews student perceptions of preparedness and study skills and learner qualities. I'm not sure where the screen went. The first category of overall preparedness had showed 83% of all students reporting that they felt overall prepared for success in high school. And that was right even with the township at also 83%. Students were asked if, as a student in my elementary school district, there were community service opportunities to use my talents and skills to help others. 77% last year and 79% this year indicated that they felt there were community service opportunities in the school. And this is due to a lot of the things that we've put in place over the last few years at Willmet Junior High, including our Service Over Self Club. Civic responsibility is now included in the social studies curriculum, and there are opportunities for volunteering and serving the community that way. We continue with our Inspired Youth tutoring program. We have peer mentoring in our school and a lot of opportunities that are consistent and more than just a fundraiser here and there, but really opportunities for kids to get involved in their community and help out. So we're really proud of that number going up each year. Students agreed or disagreed with when I was an elementary and middle school student, there was an adult I felt comfortable going to when I needed help or wanted to talk to someone. This year, students reported 81% strongly agreed or agreed that this was the case. Sometimes students also mentioned, if you dig a little bit more deeply into the comments, that they didn't really feel that they ever needed an adult to go to, or a lot of kids cited their parents. So that's, that's good information for us and good information for parents out there that are hoping that their children come to seek them out when there's an issue. Then students comment on the amount of homework and agree or disagree to the amount of homework I received in middle school was appropriate to prepare me for high school expectations. This year, students agreed or strongly agreed at a rate of 58% of feeling prepared. And that is down from last year, where we experienced a boost from years previous. When looking at these numbers, it's important that we keep in mind this drop and how students are reporting their preparedness and homework as we discuss homework as a district. While we need to be mindful of students and the stress that too much homework can create, we also need to balance that with preparing them for the higher expectations placed on them at the high school level. So these numbers tell us that there is a continued value placed on homework at the high school and that in order to prepare our students, the teachers at Willmet Junior High must continue to seek ways for consistent homework assignments that are communicated consistently and that those assignments are meaningful and purposeful while not overwhelming our students as they're in seventh and eighth grade. In the questions, when we dug down into some comments, some students did reflect, because the question is stated about middle school, they said, well, high cres gave less homework or in my middle school experience, but the junior high prepared me well. So some of those numbers may be slightly skewed based on how they read the question. And some also said that the junior high did adequately prepare them. Others shared that there was too much homework in the junior high, so it reversely prepared them for high school. We'll discuss some of our action steps in a few minutes for, with regard to homework. The final category that we'll look at in study skills and learner qualities is that of study skills. And students agreeing that in middle school, they learned adequate skills to be organized and study appropriately. And this year, 71% of students agreed or strongly agreed that they had study skills to be organized and study appropriately. And that's pretty much in line with the last few years. Couple of things to highlight, like I said, we, we're celebrating that the kids overall categorize themselves at 83% as well or adequately prepared for high school. We talked a little bit about the average percentage of kids that are taking a class other than the recommendation. And about 10% overall for all of the core academic areas stated that they took a class other than the recommendation. And of those 10%, 62% of kids took a level higher. Nutria comes out every winter when they do course placement. It's usually in January, at the end of January, with placement information with their recommendations for course levels. And then students have the opportunity to change that level placement either to a higher or lower level based on their discussions with their parents and their feelings on how prepared they are. So that's those reasons for those level changes. And it's, it's nice to highlight also that in English, writing specifically, math, and foreign language, we all reported, our, our WJHS students reported that they were prepared at a higher rate than in the township overall. But let's talk about some next steps with respect to some of the other data. Administration, our whole 518 team is digging more deeply into the data. We look forward to also discussing data with staff, especially about the learner qualities and the homework in particular at upcoming staff meetings and at our building leadership meetings. We have already shared data about the academic areas with our academic departments, and they discussed it last week at their department meetings. Many things are occurring already at the district level, and we're confident that these things will also help to improve our students' feelings of preparedness across the board, but specifically in science and English Language Arts. First for science, last year was, last year, so the current freshman class, we're the beneficiaries of this, was the first year that our students benefited from a fully-aligned NGSS, or Next Generation Science Standards curriculum at the junior high. And Katie, or Ray, I don't remember who, mentioned earlier that it also took place this past summer at the 5-6 level. So that is, bodes well for our students for years to come. With the implementation of NGSS and the overarching scientific practices and cross-cutting concepts that the standards promote, the expectation is that curricula would eventually align from kindergarten through high school. We'll continue to watch the numbers of students enrolling in that physics class as opposed to biology in their freshman year or environmental science and look for opportunities to highlight concepts that they will study in the high school level so they're aware of importance of the foundation being built for their further study. Sometimes it's as much as building a connection for the students and saying, this is a concept that you will study later. If you're interested in physics, pay attention because this will be revisited. Also started last year was the use of common assessments across the science department in seventh and eighth grade in order to give kids a common experience. So again, we would expect that that would bode well for the years to come. The science department heads at Willmet Junior High maintain a collaborative relationship with the department heads at Nutria. They are in fact meeting this week, I think tomorrow, to continue to discuss ways that Willmet Junior High students can feel more prepared for the rigors of all of the different high school science classrooms. So Nutria freshmen can choose to not take science, or they can choose different strands of science, one of them being the Physics PCB, one being environmental science, or one being biology. So depending on what they choose, they may have different levels of feelings of preparedness, but our teachers want to be able to prepare them for all of those strands. And so they're going to continue to talk to Nutria as to different aspects of those classes and how they can continue to help their kids as they get ready for high school. In past discussions, sorry, missed my spot. To help us understand the student perspective also on their preparedness, we're looking, the science department is looking into putting together a focus group of students to perhaps dig more deeply into why they're feeling unprepared. So students that have already graduated, and talk to them and say, you know, how were you feeling about science? What can we do to help prepare you and get some of that student perspective in there? We do hear from the teachers that our students continue to achieve at high levels. So it's important to remind ourselves also, these are student perceptions of preparedness versus what we're actually hearing from the instructors, instructors of those courses and who are saying that they do come prepared and they are doing things well at that level. In ELA, or English Language Arts, curriculum is currently being implemented in writing and will follow in reading with the new Lucy Colkins units of study materials. Several years ago, we saw a dip in the students' perceptions of preparedness in both English areas of literature and writing. And we have much to celebrate as our students continue to report high levels of feeling prepared in both literature and writing. We look forward to, to reports of preparedness that are, continue to be high as we enter into the coming years and as a result of the new curriculum. District 39, as well as the staff at Willmet Junior High, continues to also examine ways to consistently communicate homework expectations, to develop interventions for students who are struggling with homework, and to set realistic but not overwhelming expectations for our students in seventh and eighth grades. We continue to support homework completion by offering supportive programs such as Homework Club and Homework Assistance to our students. And we work with individuals to ensure that they are prepared for their classes at Willmet Junior High and their future classes at Nutria, and they have the ability to do some time management and organization through our executive functioning program. Finally, we look forward to examining the numbers of students reporting technology preparedness in the future. This is a feature on the report that we haven't reported on in the past. But with the, with our first group of students moving into their, current freshmen actually, who have experienced the one-to-one learning program, this is going to be an important number for us to look at next year to see how they're feeling prepared and if that number goes up. I'd love any questions you have.
Great, board members, Frank?
Yes, thank you for the report. This is always one of my favorite reports of the year. So, so that's good. The study skills.
That is good.
The study skills one is always, I think, a key. And the fact that we're a little bit below the Nutria average, I mean, that's, that could be tied to the, to the homework part. But, but of the two, the study skills, you know, we don't necessarily want the kids to do too much homework if they have good study skills.
Right, right. And this is something that we continue to focus on as we talk about executive functioning. And we started our Rush neurological system at, at the middle school and continue to do some lessons through homeroom at the junior high level and definitely working individually with students as well. I think some of this also comes from different approaches taken. If we are approaching science and social studies with an inquiry-based mindset, it's a little bit of different study skill set than perhaps if it's more of a traditional type of test where you're reading a chapter and, and answering questions based on that chapter. So we need to take a look at also our instruction in those classes and how do we better prepare students depending on the approach.
Right, because one of the, one of the points is our job is to prepare the kids for Nutria. And if we think we're ahead of them, then we need to pull Nutria forward. But if we're ahead of them and that causes our, our kids to have a more challenging time at Nutria, that's, then we're not.
Absolutely, absolutely.
On a related or possibly separate topic, the, the science, I know you're taking it seriously, but I wanted to just kind of focus a little bit on the number. If, when, we're 40% of the, of the total number. And for a lot of the ones where we're within a point or two, that really doesn't make that much difference. It pulls it up, pulls it down. But if you, if you look at the science, it looks like almost 100% of the reason that the district number went down was because our numbers went down. It wasn't that the district numbers went down also. Our numbers went down 16% and we're 40%. That means somewhere around 6% or 7% of the district drop was because of us. So, you know, just, you know, from a focus standpoint, it wasn't the district science numbers went down. It was something we did different, you know, I mean, whatever the things that you're working on. But that was really where the numbers are coming from.
Yeah, and I did actually dig a little bit more deeply and looked at how many across the township or what the township reported as, as taking physics, because I think that that number had gone up for us in the past year. We had, I think about, I said, about 32% of our kids, yeah, took physics this, for this year that was reporting as opposed to 24% the year before. The township stayed at 24% both years. So that's, that's a pretty big difference in the amount of kids from the junior high that chose physics.
That is an interesting shift in one year, 24% to 33%. Can you attribute that to anything?
I am not sure that I can. I think that would be the purpose of the focus group to find out a little bit more about, not only their feelings about preparedness, but also what, what led them that way so that we might be able to foster that more and, and help to align our curriculum a little bit more with that.
I look forward to hearing more of what you learn on that. I would say though, that students reaching higher than the recommended grade level is one of the oldest traditions here in District 39 and other center districts as well. So I take that as kind of a neutral factor. But the implementation of the NGSS curriculum sort of coincides with the uptick in people going PCB, right? Correlation maybe or just a coincidence, I don't know.
They do do a really cool unit on energy transfer in eighth grade, and they, they look at solar energy. They look at, you know, hydroelectric energy, lots of different energies. And, and that may inspire kids to look at physics. Again, the physics classroom in high school is slightly different, so, but they may be inspired by that.
Yeah, I imagine there is something there. I, I'm also curious to know whether the educators that you're consulting think that anything was lost in articulation a year ago or 18 months ago when they were trying to talk about or speculate about how well our students would be prepared with the implementation of NGSS. When they got to Nutria, likely a large percentage will be ambitious kids. We know how our science teams do, new science labs, new curriculum. Maybe there are lessons to be learned about the articulation process. about the articulation process.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll continue with that.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
I have just a question, or more so a comment. I think that the student group is a good idea. I was thinking, when I saw the science curriculum from my kid's teacher this year, I thought, "This is the coolest science curriculum ever." And seriously, the whole inquiry-based. It is. But then I thought about my own kids, and maybe there's partially, they're not at a maturity level to be as inquiry-based as we want them to be. Some of them just not even knowing where to begin or how to do something. And when I was reading through it, I'm like, "This would be the greatest class ever." And then I pictured a bunch of kids, I know, actually, not really being able to be, know where to begin or what to ask, or what to inquire about. And maybe that's just a little, I mean, it's something to think about. Not that it's wrong or not the way to go, but they might need a little bit more direction and fact-based and definition.
Definitely, and I think that there are aspects of that throughout. And our teachers are aware of kids that may need that more structured support as well throughout the curriculum, and they build that in. One, a really neat approach that the, the teachers took last year across the eighth grade science was a flipped unit where they were able to work with the LBSs, work with the DSTs, and work across the grade level to really provide independent learning for the kids across the unit. So the kids were accessing the things online. They were doing labs independently or with a partner. And they were, there were almost tiers of assignments in there based on the student's interest and ability level. So we're definitely aware of that. And I think that we want to continue to look for how we need to support each individual child with each approach.
And I've just heard comments too a lot about, a lot about, a lot of peer assessments. You know, peers assessing other people, you know, how they think another child did, et cetera. That too could maybe be leading to a little bit of stress. I mean, again, a maturity level if they, if they're mature enough to be doing that in the correct context.
Sure.
Again, just something to think about.
Thanks.
Any other board member comments, questions? Cindy?
This may be like the, the obvious thing to be checking out, I guess, but in terms of how Nutria determines the placement recommendation across the three science choices, if there's really differentiation in, oh, you might be a Level III Biology, but you'd be a Level II Physics, or if it's really that your recommendation is the same level regardless of what you choose. And if that-
It's, it's usually, the level recommendation is usually based on their math placement or the, the placement test that they take. So that determines the level. So I think the way that it comes out is you can take this strand, this strand, or this strand at these levels. The physics PCB is only offered at a three or four level. So if a student chooses that but is recommended for a two-level class, that means that they're taking automatically a level higher than was recommended.
So there's not necessarily, I guess, when they make the recommendation, they are factoring in that the, the actual science class is different versus you're at this level?
I think that they recommend the levels as well as the classes, or they say you can take this class, this class at a two level, or that's what we would recommend. But it's, I'm just thinking of it as, as far as I know it in, in languages, they would recommend, like if you're a three level, they'd recommend a three level in Spanish one, French one, German one, whatever it is, and you get to choose the class.
But if they-
So it may not be this, so, but the science analogy, as you've been describing-
Right.
-what's necessary to be capable or prepared for physics, like maybe they need to rethink how they-
How they're recommending.
Actually, that, maybe that's my point.
Right, absolutely.
They need to rethink how they recommend, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Mark?
I just have a request, which is, I mean, I think the science thing is a big deal. I'd love to hear a report on this before, a year from now when we get these results back. I'd love to hear, whenever it's appropriate, March, April, whatever it is, after you've done some work, you know. Okay, so what, what do we think that the, the issues were?
Sure.
I just have one quick question. Is there a way to pull out the PCB students and to find out what they thought their level of preparedness is?
I can see if we can get to that level. I am not sure how the, how, if they have that information.
Yeah, and these students are now sophomores.
Right.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, we've got the data. The data's in there somewhere. If they have stronger dissatisfaction or unpreparedness, okay.
I just have a question on the PCB thing. If we're kind of tying to that that may be a significant factor or not. Did Nutria always offer the PCB sequence at a Level IV? Or my recollection, I mean, at a Level III and IV?
It was only Four.
My recollection was that it was only Four, but now, maybe it's a recent thing that they are also offering it at Level III. And that's, I, I don't know the answer to that, but my recollection was that it was only recommended for, at a Level IV. So if they've added it to a Level III, maybe that's just something we should know as something that's been a new thing.
And that's something I can look into.
Yeah.
I was just looking at this year's data and last year's data, and it was at Three and Four at both.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next annual business item is our 2016-17 application for recognition of schools. Dr. Lechner?
Yes, this one is a brief report. Each year at this time, ISBE requires school districts across the state to submit for the recognition of schools. Basically, we are certifying that required practices are being completed across the district, for example, indicating that teachers are qualified and certified to perform the duties as they're licensed to do so. This is a mandated annual approval.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And finally, Summer Enrichment Program 2016.
Yes, we had 551 students attend our 2016 Summer Enrichment Program, taking 132 classes. Once again, parent feedback was very positive. We had two changes this year. One was a new online enrollment and fee payment system, which proved to be efficient and convenient for parents. The second, we eliminated the tuition for our basic classes, thinking it might increase enrollment, but it did not. There was no significant increase in participation. And then finally, the SEP program is cost-neutral. But transportation revenue continues to be less than expenditures, noting a loss of over $16,000. If we discuss fee increases, it'll be at a future board meeting, and Dr. Thrasher has this report.
Thank you, Dr. Lechner, good evening. The success of the Summer Enrichment Program is attributed to the collaboration of many people. Debbie Cooper has organized and directed our Summer Enrichment Program for several years. This year, she was supported by Cindy Morgan, who entered all the courses and the information into the Red Work System for Enrollment, and Vicki Simpkins, who worked with parents to register students. Vicki also ordered and organized materials and supplies needed for each class and served as secretary at the Ramona site. Amy Fries was the site director at the Willmet Junior High, managing the day-to-day operations. In total, the Summer Enrichment Program employed 93 people, working towards a positive experience. A strong factor in this program's success is the variety of the courses. You can see some pictures that, as I'm talking here, from those involving food, like books and breakfast, or cooking with math, to physical activity classes such as Cheer Through the Summer, Lacrosse Fit, Games, 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 to courses with a computer focus such as Coding Camp, Publishing House, and Ammonators. There's even music involvement courses like Beginning Guitar, Making Music with Technology, Jazz Combo, along with courses with particular contact areas such as the Magic of Math, Radical Readers, and Mentor Writing, to the new courses that we're offering this year, Lights, Camera, Karaoke, Fine Motor, Hands-On, Jewelry Making Magic, are just some examples of those new classes. Our basic courses in reading and math and our extended school-year classes also were offered in tandem with our Summer Enrichment Program. Extended-year participation is established through the Individual Education Plan Process as it is a mandated service. 130 students participated in our ESY program. Our basic classes are offered to students needing continued instruction and support in reading or math. Students recommended for this class fall below the 10th percentile on our universal screenings. Last year, the Board of Education voted not to charge a tuition cost for the Summer 2016 basic classes. However, this change did not have an impact when reviewing the percentage of students recommended that actually took the class. As Dr. Lechner mentioned, we initiated online registration and a credit card payment for the 2016 program. Overall, we found the system more efficient and are recommending we can continue for the Summer 2017 program. At a future meeting, consideration for program locations as Ramona and, and McKenzie will be under construction, and a fee structure recommendation will be made. At this point, are there any questions about last summer program?
Board members, Tracy?
It looks like it's a really popular program when it's at High Crest. Am I re, because it says 2012 and 2013, we had 630 students and 703. Ramona, High Crest, McKenzie, High Crest, and then the rest, Ramona, McKenzie, Ramona. The differentiating factor there is WJHS, and it drops like 150.
It could be a reason. And we also attribute the, the drop in the summer in 2014 just because of, of the economy and parents looking at extra, at different options. But that could be. If we turn, if we end up having the program back at High Crest this next summer, it'd be interesting to watch that.
I mean, again, I have no clue, but that, I mean, there's definitely-
I see why you could see.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anybody else? Frank?
I had, I had a minor one. The last time we looked at this, we looked at the evaluations, and we identified that very, well, one, it was spectacular that it was almost 100% said that they loved it. But the other problem was very, 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 very few people responded. Then we, the report today basically had the same results. Again, spectacular, you know, approaching 100% loved it, but like 10% responded.
Right.
So if we could do something about getting a little bit more response, I mean, it sounds like it's a good program, all the indicators are. But if there's something hidden there, we're, we're certainly not getting at it.
We can try that, but I promise you, if there is a concern, we would hear about it.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure about that.
You know, one, do you track repeat families? Like who comes back year after year?
We could definitely look at that. You're not talking about repeat families as far as evaluation, just repeat families.
Like, right, in your sample.
Yes, we could definitely look at that. That's, it would be a good, something to examine.
One more question I just noticed with ESY for IEP.
Yes.
Jumped from 109 to 130. Was there an increase in IEPs?
There was an increase last year in IEPs.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, great, thank you, Dr. Thrasher. Okay, our last item is our board policy review. We have our second and final reading of several policies. Dr. Lechner?
Yes, since our last meeting, board questions and suggestions from the first policy were considered. These second-read policies reflect your suggestions as approved by legal counsel, and they're ready for your approval. And Dr. Glackey, Glackey, is there anything to add?
No. Okay, any comments from board members about the revised policies? Cindy?
I already asked this. But on Policy 7:50, where it says paragraph below is taken directly from 7:70, I assume that, it was confirmed that that, that language is deleted when you're done, when you're final with this.
That's correct. It's just to help direct where the information is moving, shifting from policy to policy. It will be gone when it's-
And then similarly, 7:70, where you talk about the paragraph being moved, I'm assuming that parenthetical as well as the paragraph itself.
Correct.
Okay.
I just have a question. 7:50 as well. Just, why does it say, if we're talking about kindergarten, that a student qualifies for spec, is eligible for admission at three years of age versus five years?
Because it's a student with special needs and they're eligible to come to our, to receive services.
Okay, but not kindergarten? Like they'd go to early childhood? That's why I'm asking. I was thinking it was in reference to kindergarten.
No, this first line under school admissions is to be eligible for kindergarten, a child must be five years old. Is that, and then down below?
It says-
Oh, at the end, I see the last.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, the last.
But it explains that they're eligible for services at the age of three, for special education services.
Okay, so it's not referring to kindergarten? That's why I was confused. And then I have another question about same-age-type thing in 7:70. And then I have another question about same age type thing in 7:70. Just why do we go to age 17 versus age 15 when with Nutria, they're at Nutria when they're 17 years old?
Correct. It's, it's just the standard wording of the policy, perhaps for unit districts, but at 15, you're right, in our district, they would, they would move to Nutria.
Want to change it?
I can ask. I can check with our attorney.
Okay.
We have a, we have a standard practice. At age 15, they go to Nutria. So we've had a couple situations where parents held their children back in eighth grade, they moved to Nutria.
But still, Nutria is responsible, correct?
You're right.
That's why.
I wonder if we could just make that adjustment tonight, or do you need to check that out? I'm pretty comfortable with making that change, but I want you to...
We could, we can make it or say subject to, subject to attorney review. We could say that too, if you want to.
If you're going to do that, point number six, also talks about kids 17 years of age or older, so I don't know.
Exactly. About working, right?
Right, it should be 15, right. So we can either pull it and save it for third read, which I have no problem doing that. Okay.
I think we probably should.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, this is our second opportunity for audience members to address the board. Would anybody like to address the board? Please come forward. I would like to remind you that this is the monthly business meeting of the Board of Education, which is held in public according to the Open Meetings Act, and during our meeting, we provide opportunities for the public to present to the board about district subjects that are of interest to them. If you have specific questions, Dr. Lechner will respond promptly tomorrow. Could you, I'd like to remind you to use the microphone, state your name and address, and you're allowed five minutes. Thank you.
Sure, thanks, thanks, Alice.
Welcome, sure.
Thank you. My name is Jasmina Hauser, and I live at 11917th Street here in Willmet. And I was so excited to get my Willmet beacon, as we usually do, in the mail, and I opened it up and saw that there was an advertisement under the calendar that said Nutria School Board Caucus was looking for residents of District 39, largely Willmet, but also Glenview, to serve as delegates, and is seeking candidates who would like to appear before the caucus to be considered for the four seats that will be contested in April. This date serves as a workshop and first meeting. The date that they're referring to is next, is this coming Thursday, September 29th, at 7:30 PM at the Nutria West 385 Winneka Avenue, Winneka Campus, which is interesting because I've served on the caucus before, and we've always met at Northfield. But anyway, so they're looking for delegates, and it said this, that for more information, contact Dan Fogel at 312-342-9555. So I had several people who were interested, and when we inquired, it turned out that, I think Dan Fogel's the chair of it, of the caucus, and there were, he said it was already full. And I was confused because part of the rules of the caucus, and I'm hoping Alice Schaffey might be able to help me out with this, because it says here that, it says in the event, that by June 15th, this is part of the rules of the Nutria High School Board Caucus, in the event that by June 15th, a sender caucus fails to select delegates for the Nutria caucus and provide the names and addresses to the caucus, the chairperson of the Nutria caucus will contact the president of the respective sender district school board, who shall select by his or her own method delegates to serve on the Nutria caucus. So I had two questions, the first being, did Dan Fogel or the chairperson of the Nutria caucus contact you by June 15th? And if he did, what are the, what are your, it says, you know, the sender district school board, the president of the respective sender district school board, who shall select by his or her own method delegates to serve on the Nutria caucus? So one, were you contacted? And if so, what are the, what is the selection process to serve on the caucus?
Right, and this is because it's Nutria, I've never, I'm not aware that we've ever been involved in that, and that's something that we'll have to look into, and...
Oh, so you weren't notified?
Mm-mm.
Okay, well, so then, that's kind of confusing. So there's no role for, okay, there's no, there's no selection process?
Yeah, you know what, let me, let me find out about that.
That would be great.
Because I'm not prepared to answer that question right now.
Sure.
Let me find out about it.
Okay, but you were contacted. Thank you, I appreciate that. And if you want to, I believe Dr. Lechner has my...
We have your contact.
Yeah, yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I have one more question. And if you could find out for me, that would be really helpful, how that selection process happened, and if there is opportunity for, you know, others just in District 39 to still be considered, and who would we contact? That would be helpful.
Okay, we're, we're really not involved in that at all. So I'd ask Dan Fogel that question and how he selected the delegates.
Oh, well, he referred us to the rules. And the rules say the president of the sender district is responsible for selecting.
I, I'm actually on the caucus this year, and I can say that I was contacted in March. Dan Fogel contacted me via invitation like two years ago. I don't remember if I was emailed or a phone call, but I do know I got a call.
Okay, but that was in March of whatever. I'm, yeah, I'm talking about this year, how it's done. So whatever you find out, that would be great.
Okay, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Sure.
Okay, are there any other audience members who'd like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like to pull from the consent agenda? I think we're going to pull policy 7:7.
Wait, Alice, one question. Was there old business? Did you ask that?
No, we haven't gotten it yet.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
We're going to pull policy 7:70. Oh, excuse me, sorry, 7, 7, 7 colon, oh, it is? Okay. Okay, that's what I thought, okay. Okay, Mr. Steen, will you proceed with the motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I will. I move that we approve the personnel report dated September 26, 2016. I move that we approve the 2016-2017 District 39 Strategic Plan. I move that we approve the 2016-2017 Application for Recognition of Schools. I move that we approve a second and final reading of the revised Board of Education Policies, 7:15, Student and Family Privacy Rights, 7:20, Harassment of Students, 7:30, Areas of Attendance, 7:35, Assignment to Teachers and Classes, 7:40, Promotion-Retention-Acceleration, 7:50, School Admissions, and 7:90, Attendance Excuses. I move that we approve the accounts payable for bills listed between August 30th, 2016, and September 26, 2016, in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $315,084.80. O&amp;M Fund, $154,776.80. Transportation Fund, $47,478. Capital Projects Fund, $522,862.50, for a total, all funds of $1,040,201.38. I move that we approve the manual checks issued between August 30th, 2016, and September 26, 2016, in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $420,524.22. O&amp;M Fund, $28,174.79. Transportation Fund, $12.54, for a total, all funds of $448,711.55. Second?
Thank you. Motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Kimberly Alcantara?
Yes.
John Flanagan?
Yes.
Tracy Kearney?
Yes.
Cindy Levine?
Yes.
Frank Nivico?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Yes, the ayes have it, the motion's carried. Now, I believe we need to vote on policy 7:70, and I would ask for a motion to table policy 7:70 until our next meeting.
I move that we table policy 7:70 until our next meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do we need a roll call? May I have a roll call, please?
Kimberly Alcantara?
Yes.
John Flanagan?
Yes.
Tracy Kearney?
Yes.
Cindy Levine?
Yes.
Frank Nivico?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Yes. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. So let's move on to conference items, old business. Tracy?
It's quick, sorry. I was going through the website, getting, just before school started, to refresh, going through the minutes. And I know in October of last year, you were on this email too, that we agreed to post the committee meeting minutes, and I couldn't find them. They're no longer embedded. We first embedded them in their minutes, but I, okay, they're not, it's not a total, I did find some of them somewhere, it's just not obvious. They're not under where it says minutes, first of all, nothing is, just so you know. Even the regular board meeting minutes are, they're under meeting information. But then I did find some PDFs, but they weren't, you know, named, they're named oddly, like they were just put up there. I mean, they're not obvious what they are. All are there, except, we don't have any, and I know board strategy's new, that's not on there, but it will be, and insurance and Wixie. And through that, I also realized insurance and Wixie are not on our school calendar. Those dates aren't posted.
They should be, but, okay.
I'm sure it's just an oversight and that the website has changed. But additionally, and if I could just say this here instead of a new business, it has to do with the same thing, I'd love, I think it would be a good idea to have a committee description for each of our committees. That would be great. And two, in addition...
You mean on the website?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, on the website. And then if we could, you know, where we post all the board members? Could we have their committee assignments posted next to them?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Good idea. Any other old business? New business? I have one new business item. I'd like to ask, this, we're talking committees tonight, I'd like to ask the administration to review the policy 2:150, the board committee policy. I know we did this earlier this year, but I was out of the, after hearing some conversation about board committees in our strategy meeting earlier this, or last week, I went back and looked at our description and the policy, and I think it needs a little work. So if you guys could take a look at it, I appreciate it. Okay, good and welfare.
Wait, Alice, when you say it needs a little work, like a defined process for selecting...
Well, I think the process, how we select, in my mind, other people may have different ideas, but how we actually select committees, you know, the president usually does it, when do we do it? We do it annually.
What the thought process is.
Yeah, kind of, you know, how, more to reflect what our current practice is and how we work with our committees.
I agree.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, may I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to review executive session minutes and recordings and discuss collective bargaining and specific personnel?
So moved.
Thank you, second. Thank you. Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alex Schaff?
Yes.
Kimberly Alcantara?
Yes.
John Flanagan?
Yes.
Tracy Kearney?
Yes.
Frank Nivico?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, motion carried. We're adjourned to executive session. Thank you for coming. And it is 8:38. Okay, so you don't need those.